Saturday City Council Committee Meeting, Special Finance Committee Meeting, Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, 4:30 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Trugge, James Lee, and myself, Chair. The Special Finance Committee Meeting was called by committee members for the limited purpose of assessing the 2021 budget. Jeff, you have the floor.
I'm...
And Jeff and Jeff.
And Jeff.
And Jeff.
Well, before we get started, I wanted to check that next week, Thursday, well, whatever day would work for you guys next week. I think Joyce is tied up Wednesday evening, but I'd like to meet again and bring in two or three more department heads to go through their budgets. So I was thinking Thursday from like 4:30 to 5:30. Or quarter to six. If that don't work...
Which day?
Thursday.
I'm just asking what day. If Thursday doesn't work, we can try Tuesday or...
We have a public hearing Tuesday.
I'll do it Thursday.
No, then...
I can't do Thursday.
I'll do it Wednesday.
Wednesday then, Joyce...
Joyce won't be here.
And Tuesday there's a public hearing.
What time is that?
Six or 6:30. I can look in the window out there, but I'll check. I think it's 6:30 or 6:00.
I forgot, but I have a record that was 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
Which one's that?
That's for River Street.
Okay. So that one shouldn't take all that long.
There will be some people here for that.
Oh, there will be now, okay.
We've got 6:00 PM. I'm just figuring another hour, hour, I mean, we could stop at 4:30 to 6:00.
4:30 to 6:00.
Well, Thursday, I was thinking 4:30 to roughly like a quarter to 6:00, just for an hour and fifteen.
How about, how about Tuesday, 4:30, quarter to 6:00?
That's fine if it works for you guys, since we already have to be here. Yeah. What's up to you?
Yeah, 4:30, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, if that works.
Yeah, 27, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
4:30, right?
Yes.
And I'll line up three or four more department heads to come in that night to go over there. So is that good for you?
That's all right. I don't have to be here. I mean, I'll...
You can't be here Tuesday?
No, I've got a meeting at five. But I wouldn't have to be here just for department heads to explain because they've already, for the most part, talked to us. I've already got the numbers. We just need to let council know.
Well, if we have any questions for you, we can ask you later.
Yeah.
Maybe we can catch up at the next meeting after. I will, I will kind of what our thought process was as we keep going through and getting department heads in here to go over them. We really want to see where revenues at at the end of November to make sure what we're budgeting for, so we could work or do we have to make some cuts. So we would probably have to pass it as an emergency, probably at the last meeting in December.
So that'd be usually do.
Yeah. But this year especially, we want to see where our revenue's at at the end of November to see how we're compared to last year. So...
Tuesday, the 27th, 4:30.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Do you already have, oh, sorry. Do you already have, you know, if revenues are down, do you have, at least in your head, do you have ideas of areas that you may try to pull some of that from?
What do you mean pull?
Well, you're, you're saying we want to pass this after you see where your revenues are. And so if the revenues are lower than expected, we're gonna have to make cuts elsewhere, is that...
Well, we're just going to each fund to see what we're...
Right. And my question was, do you already kind of start to know where some of those funds are, or have you not thought?
Well, some of it will be whether they, they might need a, a truck or a mower. You know, that's, if you, when we get into Jeff's fund, you're looking at a mower that is 15 years old, but a new one's 150,000.
Right.
Luckily, that's in the street fund. So we're okay at that point.
Right.
But the other ones were, were borderline...
I was just gonna say, if you already had some ideas while we're starting to go through stuff, maybe say, and if we're tight, here's an area that, you know, so we can make some mental notes if you already know. If not, we'll address it when we have to address it.
I think we should address it when we get those numbers. Personally, I, I don't, I mean, it'd just be a swipe now, or at least then, we've got true numbers.
Okay.
And for Joyce to make a balance or, and the budget sheet's gonna have to make some cuts any...
And chances are, it's probably going to be if there was new equipment that, you know, we just can't swing. That's gonna be the area that's probably gonna get cut first.
Okay. So you do have, Joyce gave you the budget worksheet, which the new numbers aren't in this yet, but as we started in lands and buildings, Jeff's got a few things that we'll, we'll go over and ask if you see something you want to ask about, ask. But a lot of the items we looked at are the ones that we either increased or we cut that we made a note of on this paper. So we can try to simplify it, but feel free to ask. So we'll start on page one, under lands and buildings. Under outside contracts, we cut from 50 to 25. And that could be anything that could happen here that we need to hire somebody to fix something. Luckily, hopefully, we won't. Everything that we put in the city hall here, or some of the other buildings, you shouldn't have much else to fix. Operating incidentals, that, that's, we just raised it $800 just with everything going up. Same with some of the operating equipment. And then the building improvements. We talked about out of the poolhouse, all around the top is open, which is deteriorating inside the poolhouse. We got a quote of 18,000 this year that if we wouldn't put windows in there to seal it up good for the winter. Because right now, the whole, majority of the ceiling's peeling paint, and we're gonna have to get it scraped and painted, and it's gonna continue to do that. So it's just, we put it in there, we don't have to do it, but...
That's something that we looked at back in 18, I think back in the price was like 13.5, 13.6. That's how much it went up to by not doing it back then. Basically, windows, take the looper screens out and put windows in, it's got screens that you can open and shut in the cold months. Now what we do, we basically stick plywood up throughout the summer months, you can't close it up, you gotta leave it open. So, so just something to talk back in 18 about, never did.
And that would be, Kevin, to your point, if we had to cut something?
I understand that, yeah. I just didn't know if you already had some earmarked at all.
The fire department wrote, we didn't do this year because we kind of got it sealed up for the year. But that was one of the items when we looked at the general fund, we held back not fixing it. So we'd have to get a new quote, but it, that's probably gonna be pushing the 50,000 mark next year. It's what? Okay. Kelly, so we did, in fact, we did increase it a little bit to cover the increase for next year. We already want to do it. Parking lot six is up by picking. That's gonna, Jeff, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Well, that's one of the main parking lots that get used all the time. We just put the electric car thing in there. Used to be buildings in there, and it's settled over the years. It's just one of the main parking lots getting used, so we figured we should get that done with the striping and everything.
Will that also include the alley or just off to the side of the parking lot?
Uh, we did measure the alley.
But I mean, it could be included. That's how a lot of the thoroughfare, that alley is probably the busiest one block section of alley in the city. I mean, that could be added if the const once they add that. It's, it's got some atrocious, you know, potholes in itself, you know, right around that manhole and stuff.
I got a question. That, a couple weeks ago, Mr. Wagner, you gave me an estimate on paving City Lot Three and City Lot Five and the City Lot, I'm sorry, City Lot Three and City Lot Six. And that estimate had 15,000 on it for the City Lot Six, but this here is saying 25.
Well, I think when I got that, it was just the square footage of what size the parking lot was of McKeever. So they, after they looked at it, we're gonna have to do some, not only milling, but I think there's some base work that's gonna have to be done too because of the old...
Foundation.
Foundation that's there from the...
El Presidio.
Yeah. So that was just a rough quote, just to mill it and pave it and be done. But there's a little more work, extensive work now. You wanna talk about the drive out there?
Yeah, the waste plant drive is the section that we did pave this year, back to the fence. And these base work done on it, the price was just too much to, for Tim, I think he had in his budget of 2025 this year, and Tim didn't have the money to do it, so Lynn came up with the estimate of 60,000, did it in there, put the base underneath it and do like a two inch and four inch deal like we did for the fresh up here, I'm coming back.
And the reason we don't do that under the street fund is because we would have to leave it open, name the street obviously, but we'd have to leave it open, not change it off.
Half a century may not be used for that.
Okay.
And that would be just back to the gate, out inside the fence, yeah.
Building maintenance, we reduced 1500. Outside engineering, actually stayed about the same at 25. Columbia gas, we lowered based off of where we were today compared to last year. We lowered it five grand, so... Any other questions about lands and buildings? That was the major ones. And we'll go down to traffic lights? Jeff, I'll let you have it. Traffic lights, 205, 7612.
Yeah, 165, we want to carry over from this year to next year. Engineering's being done on it, but the engineering never got finished yet to go out to bid. So I'm gonna carry that money over so we can finish that intersection for next year. The keepers are doing the engineering on it at this time, but not finished. So that's the reason the money's gotta be carried over.
You mentioned, we talked last year about painting some of the holes and...
Yeah, that's included. That's another... Don't quote me on this, I think it was 15 or 16,000 dollars to make the, the holes, all the metal ones for the traffic in town. That's included in that one, 165.
Yeah, like at Marion Road and Southern.
Right.
Traffic light, blue?
Yeah. Yeah, there's some in town that's silver, some that's dark green.
Used to be silver.
Yeah, they're, I think there, I think there was what, 15 of them, 16 of them or something like that?
Yeah.
So that part, we want to carry over so that project can continue. Then this year's project, probably not, 2021 project, we'd like to straighten out Mary Street and Walnut and Mary Street and Lane Street. And the reason we're putting 150 in there is going to the extreme maybe, what type of holes we use and what we're gonna get into, you know? And that, that's based on basically what we're spending on this other intersection. I don't know if it's gonna come out to that, but it, it could be.
Are these gonna be arms out instead of the, the wire?
And at this time, we don't know that even with the Popple Avenue. Depends how much adds to the price. I'm trying to keep the price down so we can do more intersections and get them done. If we go to the arms, we could add 25,000 to it, you know, or something like that. So we're just trying to be careful how much we spend so the fund can be used for more intersections.
Can you get more time out of them when you do it that way, before you have to mess with them again though to the future?
You mean from the cable to that? Yeah. I would say there'd be less maintenance, yes. Doing everyone downtown's, you know, maintenance wise has been, one of the poles itself has been basically zero. You go up and check the torque of the bolts every so often to make sure they're tight and other than that, it probably does lessen up on the, the maintenance of it.
I, I think aesthetically too, that looks better over the long term. If you're able to, over the course of a couple years, do a few more of those where you can't maybe touch all of them right now, but if it's gonna require less money down there, that might be a smart move.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
And this fund is the muni fund, so very specific to what you can use it for. Jeff, you want to, what, it generates per year? I think 60,000.
60,000, approximately, per year.
Okay, I'm new, how does it generate?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, what was it? What's the question?
I'm new at this, so how does it generate the...
The muni fund.
Generate revenue? Yeah, from license plates. You get like five hours.
It's a $5 fee that's on your license plate registration. It comes back to us through the state.
But it can only be used real specifically on...
Certain things, yeah.
Okay. It's a small paragraph, but this is what it's for?
Yeah.
Bring up the traffic lights and stuff.
Outside engineering, we just have, in case we do something done other than these traffic lights, we got 10,000 and then traffic light maintenance, we just, we put 20,000 in there compared to last year, 131, so... Jeff, any other want to add on the traffic light?
No, I should take care of the traffic. Can you kind of just explain that last line, why we're going such a drastic cut? Was it that we didn't need it, or we've done so much good stuff last year, we don't have much to do this year?
We, we had issues in town in certain areas, like Mary Road and Beale. Kept on saving the traffic lights. We had Irving Street the same way. We had Mary Street and Walnut. Time, the traffic poles are backdated when you can get them now. They're out there a year, maybe some of them. We didn't know what was going, how soon we was gonna get them, so we put the extra money in there in case we had to do some, until they got, they came in, is what we did.
Well, that money did get used for Mary Road and Beale.
Yeah, we...
For the new traffic arms and lights and whatever. That's why there's so much there.
Yeah, so we just did a bigger project last year. We're not doing this year. Okay, that's what I thought, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, Irving Street was a state project up here. We paid to do something over the curb or something.
Under streets, Columbia gas, we raised it 1,000 just to be on the safe side, because I think we're gonna cut it close this year. Outside contracts, we put money in that line every year just not knowing what we might need outside contractors for, but we did drop it to 7,000. Outside engineering, we went from about, well, it's about the same, we're at 225,000. 200,000 is McKeever for the milling and pave program, it's usually 10%, and we're, we're probably gonna be pushing close to 2 million next year. And then Arcadius is our engineer for the EPA. And right now, we got a PO open, we think we're gonna be okay for the years, that's what she told us two weeks ago. But we threw 10,000 in there just in case she goes through her funds, but she thinks she'll be okay. Equipment maintenance stayed about the same. Building maintenance, we dropped 5 grand. Street materials stayed about the same. Jeff needs some sealing this next year, Jeff's about 8,000.
About 8,000, that 25,000 be for the seal, the seal cracks in the street.
What's that?
Is that just downtown?
No, it's not downtown. That's from a seal machine that I go around seal all the streets with.
Street improvements, we went back up to the million, 750 this next year. I think we got, Jeff or Joyce correctly, but I think we're sitting on 22 and a half or 3 million dollars in that fund. But in some of that, Jeff, do you want to explain the downtown seal coating that is in that number?
Oh, that's from Charles Street to Perry Street. They want to seal the downtown and re-mark the parking spaces for next year, get some more longevity out of that before we actually pave it. I think you mentioned a spot up there by FC Bank. In a case like that, I'd try to get that, I would get that repaired before we actually seal it.
This is sealing the entire thing?
Yes.
Like you would seal your driveway?
Yes, yeah, and yes.
Stripping it, just so we can get some additional years out of...
Before we actually go in and mill it off. I think that was done, if I remember right, in 2009 when that was done?
Yeah, or 10. 10 or 9.
10, yeah.
So we're gonna try to, you know, at least 15, yeah, get 15 to 16 years out of it at least.
So as we talk about street improvements, if you guys start putting a list together of streets, do you like to see done? I mean, we have a few that we've already, you know, put our list together, but this is the pretty hefty milling and pave next year. So start looking, you know, where you live and, or you notice some streets that need done, let's get the list put together early.
Do your garbage guys normally give you feedback on that? If you ask them, hey, this week, will you pay attention and, and mark down some streets that look like they...
Actually, a guy in the sweeper and the drivers, actually, I asked for pothole lists off of them, you know, branches and stuff like that, streets that they're noticing, yes, I get that.
That wouldn't be a bad thing to put out on the city's Facebook page too, to ask people as they're replying back, and that way they get their say and gives us a chance to go look at what they tell us.
And then underneath street improvements, we had Edgewood in our budget this year. Probably gonna refer to the next council meeting to talk about it in the committee meeting. We'd like to go ahead and get that drawn up through McKeever and get it out to bid so we can maybe get it out to bid in January, so we can actually get that one done first. But we had put it in the budget this year and we didn't do it, just was trying to watch. But we went ahead and put it back in the budget.
Is that concrete right now?
Yeah, we're gonna make...
Same as we did?
Yeah.
And that's, that's a little different than milling and pave, that's a complete dig out.
What we did at Earl.
Yeah, same thing we did at Earl, we had to be digging the base out, put the base back in. Curb file, is I think one curb, catch basin line that's bad out there, but as far as a lot of engineering on it, Lynn's not gonna do a full-blown prints on that. He's gonna do elevations and do it that way to save on engineering, so that cost should come down.
Jeff, you want to talk about the webber?
Yeah, sure. All right, as Jeff said earlier, we're talking about, we got a sidearm mower that's 15 years old, and that's basically what we said we'd get out of it, 15 years. We started noticing an issue with the transmission in it, so we priced a new one with a sidearm mower and a rear mower and stuff, and it came out to next year's price of 152,000. And that's not a trade-in, I know, we still get some money out, you know, the trade-in will come in, or we sell it direct one, one way or the other.
I'll get more money if it goes.
Next one's a grind machine for making of the grind. The other, the unit we have right now is given to us by the state. It's more, more set up to, for an employee to look at and make sure the percentage is 23.3, and if it's off one direction or the other, basically it'll freeze quicker. And it's starting to rust, this is getting rusted out, it was, it was never meant that it lasts 10 years, okay?
Is the state got rid of it?
That's the reason the state got rid of it, yeah. So basically, get that unit to make the grind, you're looking at, through Henderson, you're looking at 45,000 hours. And the, the pour machine down below 3,000, that's something Lynn McKeever and I was just talking about. Before we do the muni, muni projects, we'll go out and actually pour down and see what's underneath it, see if we need to do a base, to see what material was underneath it, so we know what to tell, go out to bid with. Does it need a base? Does it need this? You can find out for sure if some bricks underneath there, you'll know what's there. And, you know, just, I think it's a plus, so we know how to bid the project and you know what to put underneath it. And any questions on that? New vehicles, we have a 96 and a 99, single axle dump truck, salt trucks, and we're gonna, I don't know which one I'm gonna keep, get rid of. The one I would keep, one of them to be kept for a chipper truck, this would be in the fleet to put the box on and send it out with the chipper. We're gonna replace that, and the cost of that's 165,000. And the next one's a salt, and we're, the state purchase price next year is 5486. And you see where Jeff and I had decided to lower it down as, as the price dropped from 85,000 down to 65,000.
I think we're committed to buy about 1,000 ton, and right now, we're probably sitting on...
Close to that?
Yeah.
Probably got 1,000, 1,100.
So if we have a mild winter, we might be able to go a year without...
Will the state still store it for you if you don't have the room?
We got the room now.
You do have?
With the facility up on Irving Street, my garage, we got plenty of room.
But the nice thing is it went from $90 a ton down to 54, so I mean, if we have a mild winter, we'll be good probably next year and won't have to put it in the budget. Because we're committed to buy 1,080 ton, because we have to buy 90% of what we put in the legislation, so...
And the bridge repair, this, was hoping to get the repair done this year. We switched engineering firms, so Lynn is talking to Crawford Construction about both these projects. As far as engineering, at this time, we don't feel we have to do engineering so much on them. Lynn's dealt with Crawford Construction before, and Mary Street is probably gonna be the major one. Poplar Street is basically concrete work, but they're not gonna happen this year like we thought, so we want to make sure we get those back in for next year.
Did they give us a report on the supports for Mary Street? You know, because as a former councilman was saying about the water laying, I was there the other day and the water was laying on both sides and...
And that's, you know, to be honest with you, since that bridge was built, those pockets were there. And, but Lynn's got concerns of that, that this shouldn't have ever been in the way to begin with. So they're looking at the, they call them bearings underneath there, what they can do to jack it up, and between him and Crawford Construction, they've been looking at it and I don't know what the final result is at this time, but they feel it can be fixed.
Jump over to the next page to the parks. I'm thinking there we just dropped the outside contracts to 10,000. Just beyond note of what we might need in the park or things that come up. Friendship Bridge, we have to have an annual inspection every year for our insurance, so we had to raise that from 1,005.
Did the cost of inspection go up, or, or does we just not budget for the inspection last year?
Tell me what you do.
The inspections, I'm just trying to think.
I remember we talked about it, but I can't...
Yeah, I know we had a little bit of a discussion just a little bit ago with Joyce on this. I know that we, we have the, I don't know if he does, our annual inspection force. I'm, I'm not sure why we only had 1,000 in the budget for 2020.
Well, I think a lot of it was in the past, who owned the bridge was the debate for years.
Yeah, well, that's where we didn't inspect it either.
Yeah, we didn't inspect it in the past, so basically the, all the inspections that started last year or the year before.
The year before.
The year before. So two years ago, we finally, after we found out, yes, the city does own it, we started doing the inspections like we should, and plus, we found out all the, from the inspections, what the repairs need to be done, which Crawford Construction right now is doing those repairs to that. And next inspections will be in...
November 9.
The week of the 9th, Crawford Construction should be done with it all, but, but the insurance company wrote up, not the insurance, the inspection company wrote up, should be repaired plus more. So I think you guys, if you get out there and walk that bridge, you'll notice the difference from drywall screws, the screws holding everything there, it's gonna be curage bolts now, and you should notice the difference on how, how it bounces and everything, should be a lot stiffer than what it was before.
So now she'd drive a car across the...
Somebody try it, sure.
No.
So for once, all the repairs will be done, then every year, the inspection will be done, plus as far as sealing, if there is, you probably look at every two to three years to seal it. This product, insurance Williams that you use, you basically can tell if you put it on the wood and it bubbles up, it's not time for it. So you can do a couple of test areas, but you always will need, people in the past always did what they could reach, you know, the gentleman that took care of it, and most of them is up, you know, 60, 80 years old, they couldn't do the outside, outside part. So now everything's gonna be done at the same time, we'll just have to check it every two to three years and make sure it's ready for again.
And actually, Kevin, in 19, it was 15,000 in that light.
So it's a typo on my call?
That's right.
Yeah, so it was really, it was, it's 15 going down to 5, the 5 hole included at least that, if anyone's watching.
Thank you. This, other maintenance, just in the park, we put a little bit in, there's really no disc golf club members, I guess. We put a little bit in as, there's really no disc golf club members, I guess. There's people that play it, we've never had to do much. So we, we put a little more money in there just in case. Because a lot of the, some of the bowls are back in the woods. There's some stuff Jeff can't do. So in case we gotta have something fixed back in there that we can't handle. So we, yeah, we, so we added a little bit of money for it, so. Right now, on the salary line, we didn't put anybody else in the park, which is last year. I think we're at, what, sixteen, seventeen thousand, Joyce? Year to date. Still like to do that next year if we can and move our personnel, but we kept them in the street and didn't hire anybody this year. So just kinda raised that a little bit. Pool concession. Any other questions on the park? Pool concessions, we spent about four thousand this last year. I forget what our sales were, about sixty-nine hundred or something like that. But we weren't open the whole year, so we raised that a thousand dollars. New operating equipment, obviously, we dropped that down just in case we needed something from forty to five. We left the pool repairs the same. Like I said, hopefully, maybe we can get the inside painted on the ceiling. Have no idea what that's gonna cost to scrape it and paint it. They'll have to spray it, I would assume, maybe, but. And then the incidentals, we lowered to three thousand.
Jeff, I do have a question on parks. Maybe it doesn't go under parks, but the little kit we're required to do on the concession stand for the EPA, is that addressed anywhere near? I'm sorry, has that, is it all appropriated from this year yet?
The concession stand, it's a little, yeah, down below.
Oh, you're talking about down, FEMA?
Yeah, whatever I said.
Okay, well, now I, now I-
I said EPA.
Yeah, that's in the process of right now, getting the electric moved up, the hot water heater moved up.
Is that paid all out of the current year's budget?
Yeah, well, Joyce?
I think so.
I think so, too, because I already have purchase orders in place.
Right, we've got purchase orders in place, so.
Yeah, that's all getting done.
I think it's taking care of-
Finnegan's doing the flood roofing on the outside and the doors.
Pieces in electric, Ken Brothers take care of water.
And actually, ODNR's been asking, where are you at? Where are you getting this done? Yeah, they're ordered. I think the doors were on eight weeks back order, so. Outside engineering, sewers and drains. Again, not having, maybe the project next year, we still put fifteen thousand in for McKeever, whatever he's gotta get started on. We are doing a few projects, small ones, but we just put that in there to have. Sooner or later, when we meet with EPA and Arcadia comes up with a new agreement for the next set of plans, they're gonna have to get started.
As far as the repairs to that concession stand, I believe we took that out of Filton Trust.
I know some of it, yeah, we did.
So that wasn't in the purchase?
Not all of it, did we?
I, well-
I didn't think we had that much in there.
We've got sixteen thousand five hundred encumbered in Filton Trust, and I believe it's for that. So, yeah.
There's thirty thousand in there.
Is there an insurance report you have some kind of?
Yeah.
I was, for some reason, thought that was only about fifteen in there.
Well, the cussions encumbered.
Right.
The treasurer's report's different than the cash position. It's actually twelve thousand seven hundred bucks.
Outside contracts are left about the same. Training and education, we raised it to fifty, Jeff, did you?
Originally, we had to have a licensed sewer guy and just more training with that now than what there used to be. We didn't have a person licensed before, now we do, so we make sure I send you the classes to keep your license up.
Operating is announced, we've lowered about a thousand. New operating equipment.
And that's basically a carryover. We're trying to find a system for a new camera, mainline camera system that's simple, user-friendly. And everything out there is basically very detailed, something that we'll never use here. So I got some other companies looking into it to make a, write a program for us for that. And there's some simple programs coming out from other companies. So I'm gonna carry that over so we can still have it for next year.
The next line, IWOC, and you guys just talked about the OPWC for last night. So this is kind of the breakdown between the sewer things we're fixing and the water line. But this would be the sewer share. The OPWC share is thirty-two thousand two sixty-four. The city share would be thirty-eight six oh seven. So that takes care of the OPWC and the sewers part. And when we get to stormwater and next week when we get to water, that'll be the rest of, that will all add up to the four hundred and six thousand, about is what it's gonna come to. That's just a breakdown of that. Joyce, I have that in the budget and another line, I do believe, so.
Yeah, that'll be an OPWC fund for the share, the grant share, and then our share will be split.
And then we're still, next year, I think, Jeff, we can talk a little bit about the interceptor, but-
Yeah, the interceptor sewer is the one that runs basically from Island Avenue. It follows the river through town out to the waste plant. It's in areas where you can't maintain it. It was installed in the, what was that, nineteen eighty-eight? If I remember right. And no maintenance has been done to it as far as cleaning with a sewer drill. In the two thousand nine report from Arcadia, they said basically there's six inches of debris laying in the bottom of it. So that's something we need to get cleaned. And after we get it cleaned, we need inspected. We got like eight river crossings that come across the river. Those need to be inspected at the same time, see how much water's coming in from the river, if there's any. CSO five, we just found one a six inch, probably what, three weeks ago, Jeff?
Yeah.
And we was able to repair that. We've basically done away with it. We had a twelve inch and a six inch side by side that, and six inch wasn't needed anymore because it was a combination sewer. So we got away with that. And we figured roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day was going to the plant just from the river. And that's with no flow. As it rains out, there's more head pressure, Lindsay, it could go up to a million. So we, we, you know, we was able to fix that one. Location-wise, we could get to it. But the rest of the interceptors, a lot of places we can't get to. And basically clean that, you're gonna set up on that. And once a company comes in and sets up and gets started, they will stop on it. Which if my guys had to clean the road, get roads to it and all that, that'd be all it would do for summer. And nothing, uh, for us, the maintenance for the city wouldn't happen as far as sewers and stuff, setting our guys up, two guys in sewer department. Yeah, yeah, we don't know how much it's gonna cost. Lynn McKeever's talking to a couple of different companies right now, trying to get a price out of them when they have to cost us. So that's something we have to go back to you guys with.
You know, I have to let you know. Are all our responsibility, or will there be any grants available for that?
I'm not aware of any grant money for cleaning.
We can double check with Lynn, but we didn't know of any.
Good, solid waste. We, we might have a guy retiring, we're not sure. I don't know if it's something you can find out for sure, but-
It depends on his health and, you know.
So we put that in there just, just to see, in case. Land full expense. We talked about it at the beginning of the day about, you know, we're gonna be pushing probably two eighty, two ninety this year with a budget of three hundred. So we did put three twenty, we can, I think, Joyce, we talked about making it three hundred. And just see what happens next year and maybe we'll be okay to leave it at that. That fund is really tight. I mean, so we'll probably just leave it at three hundred thousand and pray they don't raise it, so. Gas and oil, we lowered to nineteen. Operating equipment, nothing new next year. So went down to a thousand. And that was about it, solid waste, just not much there to wait, so. And then there's stormwater. New equipment, we left in five thousand. New drains, we dropped to twenty-five. Outside contracts went down to thirty. Outside engineering, again, fifteen thousand for McKeever, ten thousand for Arcadia. And same thing there with stormwater, same with the sewer project, numbers come out to the same. And then same thing with interceptor, we would split that cost between stormwater and sewer water. And then we're trying to work on a price to have somebody come down through the river and try to clean it out, so.
That's basically underneath the West Mansfield Street Bridge. Lynn feels if you open that bridge up, so it goes underneath both sides of the doors, the river, you can drop it a foot, foot and a half, which would lower this, the river water, where it wouldn't go over the weirs in the interceptor. And the weirs is basically where, when everything starts backing up, it can go back over, or the system gets too full, it overloaded to the river. So Lynn thinks you can drop the river level, ODNR goes along with it. I mean, he's got, today he told me he's got like four different phone calls in, just trying to get some answers out of him, what they would allow him to do. We've cleaned that underneath there twice in the past, since I've been here twenty-five years. And it did help for a short period of time, but it's more, more than just digging it out. I mean, you gotta change the flow direction a little bit, and so it continues to stay open. So it would be more, more to than just cleaning it out. We would have to do a flow direction deal, and that's up to Lynn on, I have no clue on that, what he's planning on doing there. But like I said, he's got phone calls in, trying to get some answers, what he's allowing to do.
That's just under the one bridge?
Yeah, West Mansfield Street. Yeah, if you look at the interceptor and the CSOs on Arcadia's report back from two thousand nine, it shows there's an area right there that's a problem, the flow, the elevations and stuff. And that's where Lynn feels if you open that up or drop the river level, which it wouldn't overflow the weirs in, in the sewer system. It wouldn't go back in and it shouldn't come out either way. Which would be less flow going into the plant then. And mainly the law of separation is to get, get less water into the plant, so they don't have to process it.
The last item is, we still have not replaced our utility maintenance position. Just due to the cost, right now, we have a contract with Keys for the year. That we put it out to get quotes, who could give us a better per hour price? And I think it's right around fifty or fifty-five dollars an hour, which, yeah, we can hire somebody a lot cheaper than that. But right now, that was another position we were waiting to see if the funds could actually handle. Hired somebody back in because it's a split, so.
And actually, what we're looking at, too, Jeff, is a licensed person. But Christian, then I'm gonna have to pay Kim Keys and them to take care of Richmond County. We could actually do it ourselves, it'd save you a thousand dollars every time you go apply, you know, us paying Kim that fucking- They work for five hundred thousand dollars, depends on the project. Anything you have to, the main units put in, we could do ourselves here, but we had to pay somebody else's license.
Well, Kim retired now.
Yeah, Kim's retired, yes.
So next week, I'll probably have Chad Slavel and John Ernstberger, Tim Wood. We'll probably talk about the admin funds, which are basically the billing department downstairs. Once you do one fund, it's split four ways. So hopefully next Tuesday, we can get them all four done. And then we'll see whenever you guys are available after that. Keep moving along and then we'll, you know, we get a little closer, we'll have to do police and fire and we'll go through the rest of the general fund with Joyce and- So hopefully, a couple more meetings, we'll at least get through everybody to have the numbers to put in. See how Joyce comes out when she puts the, a projected income in. If you look through your worksheet, you got any other questions, pop me an email or something so I can have an answer for you next Tuesday or something. But that's, I just know how long Jeff would take to be in it. He had like four or five funds, so I didn't schedule anybody else for tonight.
Will we not put the twenty-one budget in this until after we've met with each department?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and they-
Because of the way I, I have to do it, and I have to export everything that's in the system now, fill it in, import it back in. And then if we make any changes, it has to, you know, it happens all over again. And I did that way too many times last year.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll keep bringing you these, with the departments on it, and if we have to update anything on these, you'll get a new one then next week, too.
On the utility maintenance, how much would it cost to hire someone? Because I know usually it's whatever the wage multiplied by three times is the layman's quick way of figuring it out. How much are you saying? So we have an idea if we see funds, if we can afford it or not. And that means how long you wanting to keep them, too. Because, you know, our funds go-
What research I was doing so far, averaged for a licensed contractor, electrician in State Ohio, to hold that license was sixty-one five. That's what they say in the averages for the State of Ohio. We have not sat down and even talked about existing utility maintenance guys make right now, you know, if they have that job. How much we're gonna raise it? I don't think we came to a number yet or anything like that, you know?
I think the top of our face go in the union right now is like twenty-six. Do you bet it all on your bid here?
For utility maintenance, Jeff, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus benefits.
Plus, yeah, plus benefits, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we actually haven't sat down and came up with a number yet.
Okay. I just wanted the idea.
It could be cheaper to have Keys twenty-six is fifty-four thousand.
Yeah. So, yeah, and the thing is, is you don't need an electrician forty hours a week sometimes.
No, but he knows doing a lot of other maintenance.
Right.
You know what I mean, so.
And that's the reason we done away with the electrician so-called job back in the nineties and came up with the utility maintenance job. Because that person's doing heating, plumbing, electrical, construction, hanging banners, I mean, whatever. I mean, everything got through on that person, so.
But also by you saying that it would save us from having to pay, like Keys Electric, five or six thousand dollars to-
Well, not so much five or six, but, you know, just Richmond County could be anywhere from six hundred to fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say. But still, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a project and how many projects did you do this year that you needed that approximately?
We didn't do a lot of, because we canceled projects this year.
But I mean, how many do you usually do on a normal year? Twenty-five?
Everything requires Richmond County? No, it wouldn't be that many. Richmond County would be five or less.
Okay, but I, I just need to know.
Yeah, five or less, I would say.
Okay.
For Richmond County.
All right.
And it's not all just for Richmond County, either.
Right, right.
You're getting somebody that's qualified, you know?
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Jim?
Okay. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
No, I just-
We keep them through this whole thing and then we approve the entire budget.
Make a motion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
During the meeting.